All right, good evening. It's 6:00 PM, Tuesday, March 28th, City Council meeting. I'd like to introduce the meeting and acknowledge that the press and the public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. If you can, join me for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the beauty of the day and for watching over us, keeping us safe. Father, we pray for those folks in the Nashville area that are dealing with the tragedy. I think only you can provide comfort in a situation like that, and we just ask you to comfort those folks that are dealing with lost family members, or coworkers, or students. Just wrap your arms around them. Be with us tonight as we do your business and do the city's business in your name of prayer. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. This is the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicole, roll call.
Councilmember Gosian.
Here.
Councilmember Han.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Streitman.
Here.
Councilmember Popson.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. First item is citizens' comments.
Mr. Klaus.
We respectfully request council to assure and commit to us in writing our administration will enforce ordinance 9-2-5. The Sweetgrass Inn has egregiously violated said ordinance for over two years. Given the verbiage in 9-2-5(c), we adamantly request you provide the Sweetgrass Inn written notice regarding your new position on said ordinance, which will result in the discontinuance of the daily 2-5 afternoon amplified concerts and any other applicable event. Engaged with the city for a year now, typically as scrutiny becomes increased on an entity such as the Sweetgrass, you would expect their behavior to improve. Actually, our experience has been just the opposite. Sweetgrass continues its egregious behavior. They get a pass from the IOP police. They go on as if the law does not apply to them. This happens over and over and over and over. We get a lot of sorrys. Sweetgrass is unable to police themselves per the March 2-23 incident from 10:15 PM to 11:00 PM, requiring Sweetgrass security 45 minutes to silence a loud-talking group of guests. We reported to the police at 10:30 PM. We don't know the response. Chief Cornet is checking that out for us now. Regarding Mrs. Hack's public comments on 2-27, Front Beach allowed 85 DBAs in the proposed new ordinance is fine. It's not a double standard, as she states. We are fundamentally opposed to commercial properties located in dense residential communities to be allowed more than 50 DBAs. She comments the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health recommended exposure limits is 85 DBAs. Well, this would be applicable to the resort's employees, but not applicable to the residents who live in the area. It's not at all applicable. She wants more decibels, at least 80, more hours for special events, 15 isn't enough, apparently. She wants more special events from 4 to 10. Our response is hold these events in the convention center as they did previously. If their business model is to make a bunch of money on a bunch of people from out of town, who wants to let their hair down and raise hell all hours of the day and night? We suggest they need a new business model, or a new location, and maybe both. And she reminds us the resort generates significant accommodations tax for the city. We all know we get very little portions from said tax that is generated. Without the above, Mrs. Hack states, quote, "Contracted groups and weddings may be forced to cancel. Based on the abuses we have been exposed to in the past two years, night and day, the Stockholm Syndrome will not work on us." Thank you.
Mrs. Kraus.
Hello. I'm Valerie Kraus, and I'm Mr. Klaus's neighbor. I've heard that some people refer to Mr. Klaus as unreasonable. He's been called unreasonable, in my knowledge, by some in the community, specifically by members of the hotel and members of the city governance. When someone is branded unreasonable, their thoughts and their ideas and their statements are immediately discounted. They are no longer given the consideration that they deserve. Simply put, the person is simply tuned out. It's disrespectful, it's not ethical, and it's in no one's best interest. My personal experience with Al is that he's not unreasonable at all. He has conducted extensive research and is very knowledgeable on noise issues, likely more knowledgeable than many of us in this room. He asks factual, thoughtful, and concrete questions about noise levels and measurement, and does not always get answers. He has thoroughly documented the noise incidents and problems and shared them, this information with the hotel, the city, and the neighbors. He has been battered by the noise assault for the better part of two years. Yes, he is passionate about the noise issues, and he's justifiably angry. He can be sarcastic, and he can be very forceful in expressing his opinions, but none of us find him unreasonable in the neighborhood. We are all bothered by the noise, not all of us speak up, and we look to Mr. Klaus as our spokesperson. Mount Pleasant has acknowledged that noise is definitely a problem and set the example of implementing new reasonable, healthy noise standards. It's far more reasonable for the city of Isla Palms to follow guidelines set by Mount Pleasant than it would be to follow guidelines of a distant city like Charlotte, North Carolina. In piggybacking on Mr. Klaus's comments of the daytime noise, there was an incident this past Saturday morning at 9:00 where amplified music and drums were emanating from a hotel event. I live a mile away from the hotel. I could clearly hear what the loudspeaker was saying in my house with the doors closed. It was a wake-up wedding event exercise. When I called the hotel, I spoke to the assistant manager who told me, oh yes, we've had several complaints about this.
Mrs. Kraus, I need you to wrap your comments up, please.
Okay. The noise should have ended at the first call. The hotel has proved incapable of monitoring the noise, and they continue to permit events that are likely to generate excessive noise. I continue to hope that the city will propose an ordinance that is in the best interests of its citizens. Thank you.
Ms. Nemus.
Hi, Glenda Nemus. I'm a full-time resident here. I may run a few minutes over, but Randy Bell did sign up for three minutes, and he's not here, and he generously asked me to make a couple of his points, so if you'll bear with me.
It's three minutes, Glenda, please. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to give some feedback about some items on the agenda tonight. Let's start with STR license application requirements. Please be resident-friendly. Not allowing people to get licenses on their own homes without strict requirements is not resident-friendly. It is actually friendlier to off-island interests. There are lots of reasons residents need to financially have the right for a license that may or may not be used. This is called a just-in-case license. First, families need supplemental income, may need supplemental income. They may need to pay for expenses on a home. They may need help in a bad economy to pay for retirement expenses, medical bills, college expenses, to have their property hold its value, to help in the case of loss of a job, to cover major maintenance projects, to remodel, to help family emergencies, taxes, insurance, et cetera. City Council, please support residents and second homeowners who may get a license and not use it, but need the security. And they don't know in advance if they're going to use it or not, but they highly have some reason to think that they may. They may have a very real need. This is not the sky-is-falling phenomenon, but the boy scout phenomenon. Always be prepared. Thank goodness for people like this who pay their way in life and keep our island homes beautiful. We should be loving these homeowners and giving them support and advantages. They pay taxes that support government, and they vote for government leaders. If you're considering that it's a problem, and you need to eliminate these people so you can have more accurate numbers about short-term rentals, it would be very easy to just factor in a percentage of numbers that might be just-in-case licenses that were gotten just on the chance that they suspected they may need it in the future. You don't have to take the licenses away from them. About the elevator that we're talking about, $360,000 now. The restaurant doesn't want it. They don't need it. They're already ADA compliant. I wouldn't say they don't want it. I'd say it would be, you know, a problem. It takes away seating, it's construction. They don't need it. They're ADA compliant, and I can think of a lot of things that we can use $360,000 to help the island otherwise. Perhaps improve more beach paths or sidewalks. As far as citizens' comments, citizens get three minutes, yet I've been here and watched CVB, Lovello, and other off-island interests get to make presentations up to 30 minutes long while we only have three minutes each. There are proper channels for charities and CVB, which is also known as Explore Charleston, and small off-island special interest groups or individuals with no real connection to the island to be heard. Definitely residents should speak first. Also, people who have businesses on the island should speak next.
Ms. Nemus, I need you to wrap up your comments.
Okay. Many of the others can follow the proper channels that are out there to get their information to the residents or to City Council. I'll say one sentence about sponsorships. CVB is already paying for a sponsorship for the event that's on the agenda. We pay them. They're using our money, so why should we pay again for another sponsorship? Parking decals, that's not a resident-friendly situation. Why should we give non-residents four decals to compete with the residents for their parking? And two things on the item that would help, if done right, are the paramedic situation and the yard debris and waste removal. I've given all of you a printout of what I did not get to read tonight. I hope you will read it and will consider those thoughts. Thank you very much.
Mr. Nab? Mr. Klaus, didn't you say he was coming with you tonight?
Yes, I can't screen.
Oh.
I know him as George, right?
Oh, okay.
So I live, I apologize I hadn't prepared for any comments, but I live close to Al near the Sweetgrass Inn. I second everything he has to say. Anybody that views him as unreasonable should think twice and actually come down near where we live and listen to the constant noise and interruptions that we have because of Sweetgrass Inn. I've sent various emails. I feel like most of you are CC'd on those. Those are a small fraction of the instances that we've had that have been disruptive to the neighborhood. And I find it frankly disheartening that nobody has held them accountable. I'm sure if I had repeated loud incidences at my house where I had people coming to visit and were creating a disturbance to the neighborhood, I'm somewhat certain that the police would show up and issue me a citation. If I did that multiple times, I'd get multiple citations. I don't think I would be allowed to be a repeat offender without consequences. But that is exactly what we're permitting the Sweetgrass Inn to do. Somebody needs to hold them accountable. Somebody needs to hold them accountable. And if nobody here is going to do that, we need to figure out some way to make that happen. So I yield my three minutes to whoever else would like to use it. Thank you.
That's all?
Thank you all. Next item is special presentations. First, we would like recognition of Captain Swain's graduation from the FBI Academy. Captain, you want to come up with any family members or others that may support you? We got a little verbiage we'd like to read. Chief Cornet, would you come up with it? We stand in his honor. We're here to recognize Captain Jeffrey Swain's graduation from the FBI National Academy. Captain Jeff Swain graduated from the academy on March 16th, 2023, as a member of the 285th session. Captain Swain appears to be the first attendee sent to the training by the IOP Police Department. Classes typically consist of approximately 300 law enforcement professionals from around the world. Captain Swain was one of four attendees from South Carolina. The process to attend the FBI National Academy is highly competitive, and statistics show that fewer than 1% of officers have the opportunity to attend the program, making those that attend the training often be listed as some of the top 1% of law enforcement leaders from around the world. The program is known internationally for its academic excellence. These law enforcement professionals attend a 10-week session at the FBI Training Facility in Quantico, Virginia. Training courses consist of advanced communication, leadership, forensic science, fitness training, and other topics that help law enforcement professionals grow in the field. Those that attend bring back a wealth of knowledge that will help enhance the departments they work for. The FBI National Academy was created in 1935 as the police training school to serve as a bridge that connects state and law enforcement to international law enforcement. The partnerships the FBI forms with students and their individual agencies as a result of the program foster mutual understanding and trust that are essential to law enforcement's collective efficacy, agility, and resiliency in the face of evolving threats locally, nationally, and worldwide. Approximately 54,000 law enforcement professionals representing local, county, tribal, state, military, and federal law enforcement agencies from the United States have graduated from the FBI National Academy since its founding. More than 150 nations are also represented among the alumni. We're very proud of Captain Swain and his achievements. Captain Swain joins Chief Cornet from the 270th session, Springdale Police Department, South Carolina, as current department graduates of the FBI National Academy. Let's take a moment to congratulate him on his tremendous achievement.
This is a huge honor to be able to send somebody from our department. I look back at all the historic papers that we could find. Nobody from Isla Palms Police Department has ever attended, so he was the first and had to be approved by the special agent in charge of South Carolina's FBI office to be able to go. So it's a huge honor. I'm super proud to have him here as one of our officers to represent us there. Great.
Who's with you, Captain Swain?
This is my daughter.
Okay. Next item, we have this later in the agenda. We're not going to discuss it or vote on it, but just out of respect for our guest from the YWCA to come and present to us tonight on something we'll take up later. Jane, anything you want to?
Yeah, I'd like to invite Lavonda Brown, Executive Director for the YWCA, to come up. She is here because we were approached earlier this year. I was approached because we had participated in recognizing the MLK weekend events last year and had been approached about doing something this year as well. I was looking for something else that we could do, more than just write a letter. And it was suggested that they needed a place to hold their VIP reception for all of their major participants, including corporate and politicians and major donors. And I immediately, this was about a month ago, by the way, I immediately turned to my husband, who's on the Wild Dunes Community Association Board, and said, would you ask the resort if they'd be interested in participating? Got a sounding, soundly, yes, they would love to participate in something like this. In fact, we already have, YWCA already has a date that they have set aside to hold an event there during the Martin Luther King celebration. So the next step was to find out who else was interested in participating. I called Helen Hill at the Charleston Area Visitors Bureau, and she thought this was a fantastic idea and that the CVB would love to participate, and we're still working with them to find out at what level. But as we get more details about how the event's going to evolve, we'll be hearing from her again as well. And then the third participant would be as a co-host, the city of Isla Palms. Since the event would be held here, I would love for the city of Isla Palms to be a host. Now, the level of financial support is still to be discussed. We haven't gotten that far in our planning, but at some point, we would like to have at least some participation from them. Wild Dunes has committed to providing the Sweetgrass Inn rooftop ballroom, and the YWCA would be responsible for food and beverage. At this point, I would love for Lavonda to please give us some description of what the event's about, the YWCA, what your mission is, and how you see it as evolving.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. First of all, thank you, council, for this opportunity, and I won't take up much of your time because I'm just thrilled to be here to talk to you a little bit about the YWCA. Many people don't know, YWCA has been providing services. Our mission is to eliminate racism and empower women. We have been doing that in Charleston for 115 years, so we're not new to this. However, we have largely done our work on the peninsula. So I came here in 2017 when the YWCA was undergoing a lot of changes. If anyone knows Christine Jackson, she was our leader for many, many years. I come here from Savannah, Georgia, raised on Burnside Island, and really grew up on Tybee, just visiting. So I will tell you that Savannah has one beach, Charleston has many. Isla Palms is one of my favorites. This is my personal plug, literally. Isla Palms is my favorite sunrise beach here in the area. So I'm a beach bomb, and I love this island. So nothing would make me happier than to be able to bridge the gap between what the YWCA has been doing, celebrating and honoring Dr. King for 51 years. We have been doing that. We are the longest-running and largest celebration and tribute to Dr. King in the state of South Carolina. We do our MLK breakfast, which brings about 700 local leaders, faith leaders, and corporate leaders together at the Gill Yard. We have a parade downtown, and we've recently moved our ecumenical worship service to North Charleston. My goal has been to bridge the gap between all of these communities. There are so many bridges, and so many people don't want to go from one bridge across to the other. So our celebration, so for me, this would really be a part of my strategic plan to bring the YWCA and this tribute to Dr. King, who really talked about a beloved community where we're all welcome and we can all live in harmony. This will be an opportunity to bring people across the bridge and experience this community in the way that you all. And I can hear the passion of your residents and how you feel about your community. I'd love to be a part of bridging that gap. So our sponsors, we have Google, Dominion, Energy, Publix, Select Health. We have, oh, I think this year we had about 20 different corporate sponsors, and they run the gamut. Many are local, many are statewide, some are even national, like Nucor and Google. So we would bring those sponsors and our donors. Like I said, YWCA has been around 115 years, so we have a long legacy of individuals and corporations that support us, and we have a very big volunteer base. So those would be the folks that we would be introducing or reintroducing to your community. And again, I just thank you for this opportunity. If there are any questions.
I'd just like to summarize one more thing, and that is that there is a possibility we could use ATX funds for this. And the reason why we might is because, first of all, this is a celebration that would be hosted at our resort. It would be in the slowest time of the year, so it's an opportunity to put heads in beds during a time when there would be fewer people visiting. And also, with the African-American Museum opening downtown this summer, I'm anticipating that the MLK celebration is going to evolve into a week-long destination for Charleston. And this event will put us right at the center of it, which will make it an even more, greater opportunity for visitors to come to our island. And I think it will really put a very positive face forward for us and support our goal, our mission to be a family-friendly community. So I thank you for offering this opportunity to us, and I'm hoping that we will embrace it.
And I thank you for the opportunity to not just, as you said, not just write a check or write a letter. We're looking for relationships. So sponsorship is one thing. We need sponsorships because we have to run an organization, but the relationships and the engagement is what's really important. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being with us tonight. We appreciate it. Next item is approval of previous meeting's minutes. We have the special City Council Executive Session on February 28th, City Council Meeting on February 28th, Special City Council Workshop on March 14th, Special City Council Fiscal 24 Budget Workshop on March 21st, and the committee meeting minutes are attached to your packet.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any edits or changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Thank you. Item five, old business. A is consideration of changes to short-term rental application requirements. You've got in your packet some items for council consideration, some other items we had talked about being assigned to the Planning Commission. Any of the items that we're looking at would be for the new renewal season kicking off on May 1st. So any fee changes, we'll hold a vote later for that, really in our next round of our budget in our April workshop. Also, we're looking at contemplating adding about 10 staff members based on paramedic program, potentially short-term rental compliance, PR, and all that needs to be taken into context at our next budget workshop in April. And we'll look at funding alternatives as well as, you know, the expense effect of those particular pieces. So tonight, I think we're just going to, Desiree or Douglas, either one, if you want to walk through what's in our packet, just to kind of show what we need to be looking at for the future. Thank you.
Sure. Based on the feedback we received from council and certainly members of the community as well on the things to consider, you know, as you know throughout the conversation about short-term rentals, what we heard constantly was for the city to do a better job in enforcing the rules that are currently in place. So we've, you know, as a staff, we've looked at what that could look like, right? What are some of the things that we could do better at? Are there changes to the application process to help us better administer and manage existing requirements, existing regulations? So that's what is included in your packet in that Things to Consider sheet. There are some items there that will be presented to the Public Safety Committee next week for some feedback. As the mayor noted, there are some discussions that we're having as part of our FY24 budget regarding increasing fees to cover some of the additional expense with adding personnel to have dedicated enforcement, dedicated management for the short-term rental program for the city. We have reworked the fire safety checklist. The new version is in your packet. I think it's much clearer where it says what's currently required by different building codes, residential codes, the fire code, and the section of those codes where those are listed. The recommendation from administration and from the Fire Department would be that the city requires an acknowledgement by the property owner, recognizing knowledge of these rules and requirements, and actually certifying that they are in compliance. We've talked about, you know, other communities do fire inspections. We certainly don't, you know, we don't have the staffing, certainly don't want the liability associated with the city conducting inspections. So one way of ensuring safety conditions for those folks that utilize their property as a short-term rental would be to have this checklist, and this is done by other communities as well. Folly requires a similar checklist. The town of Mount Pleasant most recently included that in their revisions to their ordinance. So, you know, at this point... So, you know, at this point, we're not looking for any action from council. I know that the public safety committee wants to review that document. We'll do that next Tuesday at 10:00. We're still working through additional, additional considerations for council to, to evaluate. So we're happy to maintain this conversation. As, as the mayor noted as well, the, we're in the middle of the renewal process, starting May 1st. We would be treating any new applications under the new, under the new guidelines. I know Chief Olgueris attended the chamber meeting this morning and, you know, is engaging a conversation with the rental community about some of these new requirements. And I believe additional informal meetings will be scheduled for members of the community who may have questions. So I think at this point, we just want to, you know, if there are any questions with what's included in your packet, happy to entertain those. In addition to the fire safety checklist, we have a schedule that shows the impacts of increasing the fee to the short-term rental license. There are many iterations that we can tackle this if we, you know, want to, if y'all have any thoughts. I know Councilmember Hahn had some suggestions that he shared last week. Certainly, you know, could entertain those and prepare any, any additional materials for you all. But I think that's, that's it. And the, the fee structure and the fire safety checklist is what's included.
Question?
Yeah, Jimmy.
What do you say to some people in the community that say that the increase in the fee from $350 to $550 is determined for people to apply for short-term rental? Is my first question. Then I have another.
We were looking at increases to the, to the fee as a way of trying to cover the additional costs for enforcement. I don't think that, you know, so far, the staff has not made a determination on whether increasing the fees would necessarily deter anybody from buying a license, getting a license just for, just to hold it. There are, you know, policy recommendations that could be implemented in order to do that, and, but that's just going to depend on what the, what the council wants to do. We were proposing it as a recommendation to increase revenues to cover the cost of the additional personnel.
Okay. And in section two of things to consider, revamp short-term rental application process and required applicants, applicants to submit. Item two says copy of schedule E Form 1040 to verify gross receipts. Require schedule C Form 1040 for regular business licenses. That doesn't cover all of the entities that, if you're looking for tax returns for that specific form, some taxpayer will be filing Form 8825 on form, it flows through to Form 1065, or 1120 S, or 1120 C.
Okay.
And so that's...
We could expand that.
So same information, just different...
Different forms.
Yeah, but that's, you know, that wouldn't hold up.
Could we just do it as, Jimmy, I'm asking as a question, instead of listing the different forms, just say whatever documentation is, is provided to the IRS. Give us a copy.
There's only like three other forms. I'd rather get specific.
John.
Yeah. I'd like to make a couple of comments. One is, I, I have heard this as Councilman Ward had suggested, that this fee increase was intended in some way to prevent or to limit people from getting licenses. I've never been a part of any conversation where that was the intent of this. And it solely has always been focused on putting in extra resources in order to ensure we're complying with the current ordinances that we have on the books. I think staff has admitted, I think we've recognized the fact that we don't have enough resources to do that. We have to increase the resources. It only makes sense to me to have those paid for from those that are generally the need for it, and that's the short-term rentals. So I, I, I've never been part, and I've never heard of any intent on trying to limit people from getting short-term rentals. That's not the purpose, as far as I'm concerned. I guess the second part is on number two. I question the need that council even needs to entertain this. It seems to me that this is staff's recommendations on how they are going to implement and ensure that the current licenses, the fees are being collected, that they're in compliance. So I, you know, to me, I don't, I don't think it needs council approval from the staff to take these actions to make sure that they're getting the licenses and the fee, according fees, collected, is my opinion.
We've, we've had that conversation with our attorney to confirm. We believe that it's an administrative policy meant to ease the administrative burden of managing and implementing and enforcing these ordinances. The last point in that subsection two that talks about requiring homeowner's insurance, showing personal liability, and that the policy is still in use, that would be in addition, like that would be a, a new policy requirement that we can't really tie back to any existing regulation. So there are, there will be pieces that may be, that may need to be codified, or may need to be approved by council. But we, we believe that the first three were already authorized to require as part of just managing and enforcing existing rules.
So, go ahead.
I just like to say that the increase in the fees, to me, does not seem unreasonable in the least. I mean, it's less than one night of rental for, you know, a rent, a short-term rental. And then when it comes to the fire code, or the, the checklist, I, I think it's great in the way that it's been laid out there with the requirements and the recommendations. But it makes me a little bit concerned when we say that we cannot and we are not going to check on this in any way, because basically, what's, why would anybody take it seriously? Is there any possible way that we could have spot checks? You know, I, I guess it would be a lot to ask for us to, I know a lot of cities do require that every short-term rental, I think, at least I know Sullivan's does, but they don't have that many. But would it be possible for us to have some sort of system where a certain percentage are randomly checked, just to give that section a little bit more teeth?
We could certainly look into that and see, you know, whether, I don't know. We can, that, that is certainly an, an option. You know, we've talked about doing spot check, financial audits on current businesses. So I would, I guess my gut reaction would be certainly doable and plausible, whether it's, you know, what risks we would, we would be opening, I don't know. So I would just need a little bit more time to, to fully flush that out. But that may be a good compromise or common ground to at least have those requirements checked in some capacity.
Thanks.
Scott.
On number two, I, I think the policy could help to give you some, I think, I don't know, guidance or backup for enforcing or implementing these items. So I, I think it would be a good idea for us to take a vote on those at the time that we are, are ready to do that. And I think the fire safety items, the four bits items, it's a, I think it's a relatively low bar to, to ask for these things like a fire extinguisher, carbon monoxide, be able to see your address at the door. So I hope that that can be implemented as quickly as possible. On the fees, and just a little confusion on my part, it said consideration on the agenda, so I did, thought, I thought we were going to be voting on these. And we also asked the staff to put these into the next round of the, the budget draft. So I would like to just understand, what is the timing for these? I, I agree with Katie. I think this is a, a nominal fee increase to cover our costs, and I think we've got to figure out a way to cover those costs for the additional staff work. So maybe there can be some discussion on the timing so that we can get to a decision quickly on this.
Yep. So next draft of budget will include the $200 application fee, for lack of a better term. So that is baked, Scott, into the next budget. Again, it would be, once we ratify the budget, it's really going to be, again, effective for the next renewal cycle, since we're right in the middle of it, since everything expires at the end of April.
So does this really need to go back down to a committee level to come back up to council? We've kind of cycled this through three or four times now.
No, I don't think, I mean, I think when we do our budget is where we'll take, take a look at it and make sure we're covering the cost and revenue's good. Go ahead, Desiree.
Just to add, the approval of, or the change in the fees need to be done by ordinance. So we would have to draft, not only approve, you know, as part of the budget, we'd have to draft an ordinance, have, you all need to have first and second reading. So in terms, you know, just consider that as part, when you think about the timeline.
Hey, Kevin, you have a question or two?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So questions for, I guess, Desiree and/or Douglas regarding the fire safety. You know, some of these homes, a lot of these homes are much older than the current code requiring smoke detectors in every bedroom and carbon monoxide. So how, how do, how is that handled? Are they now going to be required to outfit their homes to apply to this checklist? Or am I missing something?
Yeah, Kevin, the short answer is yes, they will be required to outfit their homes. And they get there a little differently with each one. The smoke alarms is part of the state code, and that is required on any rental. But it's required for existing houses that, when, when the code was enacted at the state level, that became a requirement. The, the other three are in the fire code, and each of them, some parts of the fire code will, will talk about newly constructed items. Other parts of the fire code say existing structures need to be made compliant. And those other three include the language that specifies that existing structures would need to be made compliant. So they're a little, they are a little different than a standard kind of zoning code or building code where you're held to the code that was in effect at the time you constructed the property because they're fire and safety regulations.
So how, how will we know if they have installed this stuff and have complied?
Well, they're, they're signing off on that fact, right?
Yeah. And I would just add that, that in, within the form, and I think we talked about this at the workshop, that a lot of the concern that we heard was from managers that have hundreds of these and, and were, and to get back to the timing on the fee, we can talk about that. But we are in the middle of renewal time now. So we heard loud and clear that the managers felt like inserting this at this point didn't give them enough time to truly vet each one of their rentals, to be confident to, to sign off on that line saying that they are compliant. So built into the, into the form is it, is an acknowledgement that they will make it compliant within 90 days if it's not already compliant. So there's a, there's kind of a built-in grace period there that they will make it compliant.
But, but just because they signed and said they have it, don't we, wouldn't we have to go back and check that they did install these items?
We, we don't, I would tell you that my, from my perspective, we would really be doing that primarily retroactively if we're called to a house, we notice there's a deficiency. It could be, it could be made an issue there, could be used in a revocation case. So it would become, you know, it would become pertinent if we were called to a house. I don't, I didn't foresee us proactively going into houses that, one of them is house numbers from the road. So I think that can, can be done just from driving, you know, down the street. But the other three, I think, would take an inspection, and we have not anticipated doing those inspections.
Kevin, that was my, that was to my question earlier, too. I don't know if you heard, if you can hear us, or...
And Mr. Mayor, just one more question.
Yep, go ahead.
So regarding requiring homeowner's insurance, why do we need this? It's their liability, not ours. Plus, you know, if, if people do not have a mortgage, they're not required to have insurance. And we all know who pay insurance, that our insurance out there is tremendously high. So I would imagine that some of these people without a mortgage are self-insured. So I, I just don't understand why we would need to have shown a current homeowner's policy while it's their liability, not ours.
I, I would just say that the staff felt like that, as Desiree said, that's a policy change. So we, we expect you all to deliberate on that point. We, we had kind of the same question, but it is done in other communities, and I think it's just done as a general safety caution.
Do we require other businesses on the island to have insurance?
No, not that we, not that we check.
Rusty.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, most of my questions have been asked anyway, but I just, I just want to say, it seems like there's still a lot of work to be done in this with committee. Both of these items, one and two, go back to the safety committee next week, correct?
Well, one of the items under two, the fire safety checklist, that...
Uh huh. That will go back to safety committee.
That was asked, yes, to be placed on the agenda for the meeting next week.
Okay. And it sounds like we have some legal opinions that we need to seek on some of this, or is this all pretty much straightforward? We could do this without any legal implications if we decide to go forward with it?
Correct. I mean, the, the first three under application requirements...
Right.
We believe we're already authorized to require those documentation to essentially enforce rules that are already in place.
Mm-hmm.
Number four, which is the point regarding insurance, that would be up to city council to continue to deliberate and decide if it wants to include that as part of the policy.
Okay.
And then the fee, that, that needs to be presented in the form of an ordinance. I know we were instructed at the workshop to include an, an increase of $200 to the base fee to our assumptions. So we're doing that. So you'll see those, you'll see those results when you see the second draft of the budget.
All right. And then the only final comment I got, since all the other questions were pretty much asked and brought forward, but I would also add, as did Councilmember Bogosian, I have not heard anyone talk about the $200 fee being any sort of strategy to be a deterrent to prevent folks from taking out licenses and not actively renting their homes. So that's a new one on me. So I don't, I don't think anything like that, at least in my opinion, was going on.
I just had one quick question that Douglas brought up about the signing of the fire safety sheet. It says on the sheet, signature of property owner. And you mentioned the fact that the companies that, that manage hundreds of properties are having a hard time with this. Are, are we having property management companies sign them, or does the owner actually have to sign it?
We have had those conversations internally about whether or not to allow a property manager. I believe that the law would still make the property owner responsible and liable in the event that they're not in compliance.
You couldn't say "or" representative?
That's how we, that's how we anticipate, allowing an opportunity for a property manager that's already designated by the property owner as a manager to be able to sign the One action that this, you know, city council could consider, you know, if you all want us to draft an ordinance regarding the increase of the fees, we, you could certainly direct us to do that. That's just a thought, if you all wanted to get that, get that work going.
Can make a motion on that?
Yeah, well, let me just say this real quick. So we'll have our next workshop is April 10th-ish.
11th, I believe.
11th. And we can't, we're not going to do anything before that to...
But we can't make any, we can't make any motions there. So if we make the motion now to draft it, at least it'll be ready for a first reading at the next, at the next council meeting. So I'd like to make that motion to direct staff to create that ordinance for the fee increase.
Second.
Any further discussion?
As I mentioned before, I have a small house on Hard Knit, and my Isla Palms portion of my property taxes is $288. Don't have short-term rental license, only intend on getting one. But if something happened to my health or other financial considerations, if I had to get a short-term rental license, then my taxes on my house, Isla Palms portion would go from $288, and I have to add another $550 to that. So it's over $800, which is, is three times what I'd be paying. And that's why I don't think the fee necessarily too much to $200, but I'm saying it just builds upon itself until where the taxes that I would pay to Isla Palms, if I had a short-term rental license, would be very close to my entire tax bill, property tax bill. That's why I can't support it.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I didn't, I didn't quite hear the motion.
The motion is to direct staff to draft an ordinance to increase the 200, to increase or add an application fee of $200.
Thank you.
Yep. So, again, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye. Sorry, nay.
Okay, I got-
Yeah, three nays.
Who are the other two?
Kevin, Rusty, Jenny.
Gotcha.
Good. Thank you. Desiree or Douglas, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item B is discussion of paramedic program. We've touched on this Public Safety Committee a couple of times, workshop once or twice. You've got a cost estimate in your packet. Chief Oliveris, you want to give us just a quick overview of, for those that haven't heard this program or haven't tuned in to one of our earlier broadcasts?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So, we got to this point under direction of Council to investigate how we could provide more efficient and effective medical response to our residents and visitors at Isle Palms. So, we met on this and discussed it, you know, four different forums, Council, Public Safety, and, and had numerous presentations. The questions that you asked were great, helped us, you know, drive down into the data, you know, get the details. And so, we were able to present, you know, the pros and cons of the models. We were able to present, you know, the cost estimates, which you have in your packets available for the different models available, you know, looking at an outsourced option and looking at an in-house firefighter, paramedic role that would be, they would be, you know, Isle Palms firefighters and paramedics. And so, we evaluated those two options and gave different scenarios how that could happen. So, we really, as we have explored this, we, it just, you know, solidified, you know, my belief, what I saw on one of my first calls here with Battalion Chief Jason Smith and his crew on sea shift. We had a diabetic patient, and we got there very quickly. We assessed the patient, they took a BGL, his blood glucose level, and saw that, you know, he was, you know, way, way below where he needed to be, and that was causing him to be unconscious and respiratory depression. And I was like, great, we know exactly what's going on, and we can fix it. But we weren't, we were only able to provide supportive care, oxygen, maintain, you know, vital signs while we waited for EMS to arrive. And so, that to me, you know, just on that, you know, a very run-of-the-mill, I guess, or generic call, we could have corrected for the patient immediately, but we were not able to because we didn't have, you know, paramedic service here dedicated, you know, to Isle Palms. And so, you know, as that, you know, as I was driving back, I was like, okay, we're, you know, we're working through our, you know, we're going to be developing a five-year community-driven strategic plan, and we're going to be working on this. And what can we do to make sure we're delivering elite customer service for fire, for water rescue, for medical? And with medical being a big chunk of our call volume, and where we can really make a difference in survivability for that patient, and just overall their comfort level, you know, if it's a fractured hip, we can administer, you know, the pain management. All those things that I've seen in my time here, which has been almost, almost a year, it is a unique opportunity for us, and I couldn't thank Council more for being open and being receptive to the idea. And we know that it is, it would be an impact to the budget. We know that there are a lot of projects and initiatives out there that you need to weigh and consider and evaluate what's best for our residents and what's best for the people that come to visit, you know, Isle Palms. And so, I just appreciate the opportunity and to present and for everybody being patient as we, as we were able to work through the data. So, that's all I have, just wanted to kind of recap and, and just, you know, it's up to you as a policymaking body on how we move forward, and hopefully you have the information that you need to make that informed decision and weigh all those options and all the responsibilities that you have and things you have to consider.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for-
Do we need a motion?
No.
On any of those?
No, not tonight. So, real quick, Chief O, thank you, as always, for what you're doing. So, in your packet is the sheet comparing option one, which is direct hire, option two is to outsource it. It's the same sheet you saw at the budget workshop a week or so ago. So, this will be included, again, in draft two of our budget that you'll see in probably early next week for our next workshop. And staff is looking at alternatives for funding that does not include a tax increase based on our conversation at our budget workshop. Blair?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for everybody's information, one, I'm very much in support of this, and one of the reasons why is that Charleston County EMS has, in the last year or so, stopped putting paramedics on all of their ambulances. So, it's that much more important for us to have paramedics, given our population here on the island. So, I, I think this is a very good thing, Chief, and I thank you so much for putting it together.
Desiree, Jan.
Mr. Mayor, just an aside, we talked about it our last meeting, our workshop, that it might, there is a possibility, we're going to work on not doing this, but there is a possibility there could be a tax increase, and I think the number we came up with was $40 for the, for the residents, $40 a year. So, I asked my husband to poll the Wild Dunes Community Association Board, and he said, they unanimously said they will support that kind of tax increase. Now, we're hoping we don't have to do that, we shouldn't have to this year, but knowing that people would even increase their taxes to provide the support says a lot for our need, I think.
All right. Chief, again, thank you for doing that. New business items, most of these we have discussed at length in our workshop, so hopefully we can run through fairly quickly. In your packet is an approval of a short-term rental coordinator position. We've talked about this, and from a compliance standpoint on the short-term rentals, that would be housed in the building zoning world, so is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Questions, discussion, Douglas, Desiree, comments? This is in our budget, you'll see it in draft two, I guess it was in draft one, actually, too, but, so it's a position that would start effective with our new fiscal year, but we'll begin immedi-, pending approval, we'll begin immediately looking for this position so we can have it up and running pretty quick.
Mayor, I would just mention that the physical demand section was reworded, but other than that, it's, it's the identical thing that you saw at the workshop.
Is this subject to the increase in the short-term rental fees or not, this position?
Not that we're voting on it.
No. They stand alone, don't they?
I'm not, so, we are, when we developed the proposed fee increase to cover some additional costs related to enforcement, it did include covering the cost of this new position as well as a code enforcement.
Correct. But we haven't approved the fee increase yet.
That's correct.
So, how does that relate to this position? If we don't, for some reason, the fee increase gets voted down, would this position still stand?
That's ultimately a decision by Council if we're adding a head count, but yes, you could, you could still approve the position, we'll just have to find other sources to cover it.
All right.
I don't think there is a-
What day is it? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item B, consideration of proposal from Coast Architects in an amount ranging between $60,000 and $90,000 for the design and development of construction documents to install elevator at the Marina Restaurant. Again, we've had lengthy discussion on this topic. If we can get a motion and a second just to get to discussion, that would be great.
Nobody wants to make a motion.
But we need to get, we need to get there.
Motion to approve?
Second. Rusty.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pretty much been in the spotlight on this particular subject all along anyway, so I just want to kind of make my plea here tonight, I guess. What we're looking at here, really, and I use the word, kind of a, the phrase, "history lesson last time," maybe that was poorly used, quite honestly, but I go back to a proclamation that we had back on 9/28/21 as a council, where we proclaimed that we were, as a council and as a city, that the American Disabilities, Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, that we were going to encourage people to reaffirm the principles of equality and inclusion laid out in ADA and recommit our efforts to reach full ADA compliance so that every person of our city has the opportunity to succeed. And I think we do a good job of doing that. But we also had as another whereas, the city of Isle Palms is committed to not only meeting the minimum requirements set by law, but exceeding the standards and go above and beyond to ensure that people with disabilities feel welcome in our community. And I think we've done a fair job of that. I mean, we've done something with, you know, like 34A with our boardwalk, the wheelchair program that we have for, for persons with disabilities on the beach, and so we've really taken some good strides there. I see the issue with the elevator in Islander 71, a building that we own, as being one that even though it's ADA compliant, fully ADA compliant, because it's a renovation rather than a complete rebuild, that it would be something that would fit that second whereas, that we go, that we go above the minimum standards to make sure that we have ADA compliance and that we are making everybody feel welcome in this community. The fact is, is that on that second floor at the restaurant, anyone that's in a wheelchair or, you know, disabled in a pretty serious sort of way would not be able to get to that second level without, I don't know, it'd have to be, that would basically have to be carried up those steps to do that. So, that's, that's number one. I go back to that. And in that, in that proclamation that we had back in September of 2021, it was passed unanimously by the council then, nine to nothing, and of course, we have several members of the current council that were in that, on that council there. And, you know, Councilmember Ward made the motion, Councilmember Boy seconded it, and again, it was passed unanimously to do that. Moving on, basically, what we're, when I look at the approval, the consideration of proposal for $60,000 to $90,000 for the design and development of construction documents to install the elevator, that's kind of misleading, because what we've been talking about all along, and at least in my, in my mind, is the feasibility assessment, and that portion of that is a fixed fee of $19,270. Now, that is, it's money. I know it's money that we look at and say, well, if we have to have, you know, a $400,000 or $500,000 elevator, then, you know, it'd be, you know, it'd be foolish to even consider that. But along with that, what we said when we first brought this issue up and the motion was made, again, about a year and a half ago, we said that we would continue to look for the feasibility to have a restaurant, to have an elevator in the Islander 71 restaurant, and we would look for ways to pay for that through accommodations tax dollars. To my, to my knowledge, we have done no research at all at this point to even see if we could get ATAX funds to cover the cost of this elevator. Am I right or wrong?
We don't have a legal, a legal opinion on it.
Right. We don't have a legal opinion, we don't have an opinion from Turk, the Tourism Expenditure Review Committee, who is a state agency that would look, look at things like that. It just seems to me that we, you know, we're kind of going at it this in the wrong way. I, you know, we're, we're kind of rushing in there and saying, okay, we're not going to spend a half million dollars. We don't know if it's going to be a half million dollars, and, and we don't know if we can get all or part of this elevator, if we were to go that route eventually, funded by ATAX dollars. So, it seemed to me that concurrent with anything we do, we should be trying to get a legal and a Turk opinion as to how much of this, if we did decide to go with the elevator, would be covered, you know? And that could make, that could, could cause a different outcome here. I mean, if we were looking at a $400,000 elevator, and it was going to be paid for 80% with accommodations tax fund, and I'm just throwing that number out there, then that might be a different conversation than us just saying, oh, it's going to be a $500,000 elevator. And we also, I mean, we have this down as item 6B, and we're talking amount ranging between $60,000 to $90,000 for the design and development of construction documents. We're not there yet. We don't even know if this feasibility study, the $19,270, is going to come back and say that it is feasible to go, to go into a design phase. They may come back and say, it really isn't feasible. We'll take you $19,000, but we've given you the answer. So, I guess finally, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, based on all the conversation we had with the prior council, and, and I know we have new people on council now, and that's great. We, you know, we have the diversity and new ideas, new opinions, I respect that. But this is an item that was left over that we really need to address, and it seems to me that the only way to address it, to cross the Ts, to dot the Is, is to look at what we said we would do in the first place as a council, is study and see if it's even feasible to put an elevator in that restaurant first, which is the $19,270. So, that's my spiel on that. I don't know if that needs to be something that, you know, other people are, I'm sure, want to discuss that, and, you know, so that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
We, we already addressed this in Real Property, and we, correct? We had a contractor give us an actual, came out, looked at it, had a place to put it, had an estimate. It, it was feasible. It was just $450,000. So, the feasibility aspect is done. We, it can be done, correct?
Yeah, I would say that the work that Trident did, you know, I think that generally they believe it could be accommodated to the building, whether the, you know, there was no structural assessment of the piles and, you know, additional structures, but I think from a high-level analysis, they indicated that it was feasible.
And so, their price was around $450,000, and it sounded like, from our Real Property or whenever that, whatever that meeting was called when we had it, that, that was pretty much what a construction or commercial-grade, external, that's, that's what it's, it's going to cost us somewhere around there. So, what we're talking about right now is spending the money to design and build something that is most likely going to cost almost a half, by the time it gets done, probably a half a million dollars. And just because it could come from ATAX money, it's not like ATAX money is going and getting money off the money tree out back. It's still part of our budget, so it's not, it's not free money. So, I just, I don't know why we would keep going down this road when I can't imagine that we would spend a half of a million dollars on an elevator, which would take a person to the top floor of a restaurant where there is absolutely nothing different, no other provided, nothing provided differently on the second floor versus the first floor, other than a 10-foot higher view, and there are no ADA-compliant bathrooms on that floor, and there cannot be. That is a big deal. It may even be that you can't do that, I'm not sure. But I do think it, that needs to be looked at also, is that you're basically going to encourage someone who is wheelchair-bound to go up an elevator to a floor of a restaurant that does not have bathrooms that can accommodate them.
Jan.
First of all, I'd just like to say, in a few years, I'm not going to be able to climb those stairs, so I've got a, a real concern with that, but I also choke when I think that we've got an elevator that might cost a half a million dollars. I'd love to explore, to see if there's another opportunity, but I'm, I'm leaning towards what Rusty is saying. I wouldn't mind trying, again, with the $18,000 feasibility study that we have here, with a pause at that point where we bring it back to council and determine whether there is a better way to go forward. But at this point, there is a limit to how much even I would be willing to spend for an elevator for me to get to the second floor.
You got a motion and a second?
I'm just going to make one more point. Yeah, we seem to forget, be forgetting one other key component of this cost, and that is, who's going to pick up the 20 years of maintenance and service that goes along with it? And that is, I think I mentioned this a few meetings ago, that is not an insignificant number. If we get into this for a half a million dollars, we probably get several hundred thousand more of the life of this thing to maintain it. So, I don't think we're looking at a half-million-dollar elevator, I think we're looking closer to a total cost of, you know, could be three-quarters of a million dollars. And to me, that's very cost prohibitive. I don't know why we throw $20,000 at a feasibility study for something that we really should be deciding, do we want to spend that kind of money on an elevator or not, and not waste 20,000, excuse me, not waste another 20,000? $20,000, excuse me, not waste another $20,000?
Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm kind of with Councilman Streetman. You know, as mentioned during last council, I voted and supported that we would, you know, investigate as much as possible to see if an elevator would fit into the restaurant. Therefore, I, I still have the support, at least for the $19,000, to do the due diligence. And, and even after this due diligence comes back, there may be a way, there's maybe no way to fit an elevator. And that would then end all this discussion, and that might have been mentioned as well. I really cannot support the $60,000 or $90,000 right now, construction drawings, which I think is incredibly high. So I'm, I'm, I'm in support of at least doing the due diligence for the $19,000.
That's on the motion.
And could you please repeat the motion as well?
Yeah, the motion's what, yeah, the motion's what's on the agenda. The proposal from Coast Architects in an amount ranging between $60,000 and $90,000 for the design and development of construction documents to install the elevator at the restaurant.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep, that's the motion and the second.
And just for clarity, Mayor, if I may, the $60,000 and the $90,000 is the $20,000 that they originally quoted for the feasibility plus the roughly $40,000 that they indicated would take to get to full construction documents.
But, Mr. Mayor, but, but the $19,000, the $19,270 is the first step in that process?
That's correct.
There's no, even if we voted tonight in favor of this, that doesn't mean that we're going to turn around and give them $60,000.
That's correct.
It means that we would at least have a contract with them for the $19,270 feasibility study.
You could approve a portion of that proposal. You don't have to approve the full, the full construction documents.
Let me do your point. If you want to amend the motion.
I would like to amend the motion.
If I, if I may do so, I made the motion. Can I amend it?
I'd like to amend the motion to say that, that we approve the feasibility assessment, lump sum fixed fee of $19,000, up to $19,270 is quoted by Coast Architects to do a feasibility study. That's a mouthful.
Second.
Go ahead, Nicole. You're good?
I'm just saying it might be just as clean for you to just say second, and we'll just make that.
Maybe withdraw the original motion and make this as a formal motion.
All right, I withdraw the original motion.
Thank you.
We got it. And then Councilmember Anderson, second.
Wait, this not on the, this motion is not on the agenda for discussion?
Well.
In the back end of the way, it is.
The proposal, yeah, the proposal from Coast is for $19,000. If we wanted to get them and contract them for full document, full construction documents as well, that amount would be 60, between 60 and 90. You could, you could approve something lower than that. I'm, I'm looking at our attorney to confirm or deny. He's nodding his head.
Can I, can I just say one other thing here? What we're suggesting is, is that we spend $20,000 to a feasibility study. And at the end of that, they're going to tell us whether the elevator is either feasible or not feasible. Assuming that it's feasible, they're going to say, okay, we need to spend another $40,000 to $70,000 due to design. At the end of that, they're going to tell us that the cost of planning a commercial elevator is going to be $450,000 to $600,000. And then, so, once we start down this path, I think someone had already mentioned, I think really what we're saying is, we're going to be willing to spend that type of money to put an elevator in, or why spend 20? I mean, I, I don't understand why we'd spend $20,000 to say, yeah, it's feasible. Now I need to spend another 70 to tell me what the cost is. And at the end of that, they're going to tell us, the cost is going to be roughly $450,000 to $600,000. We've already had the determination that a residential elevator will not work in that application. A residential elevator, I think, is in the cost range when the last council entertained this thought of pushing it off. A commercial elevator, just the elevator itself, my understanding, is between $120,000, $150,000. That's just the elevator. You put on top to all the, the infrastructure work, building the shaft, doing the installation of it, I mean, you're easily to the number that Trident told us is. So I think we have to vote on this with the understanding that eventually we're going to be either wasting $20,000, or we're going to say, yeah, we want to go forward with a $450,000, $500,000 elevator.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. And the motion is to approve the expenditure up to the 19-some-odd thousand for the feasibility study. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Roll call vote, please.
Yeah. Nicole, you want to roll call it?
Yeah, hold on a second. Councilmember, Councilmember Boghossian?
Nay.
Councilmember Hahn?
Nay.
Councilmember Myers?
Nay.
Councilmember Ward?
Nay.
Councilmember Pierce?
Nay.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Item C, consideration of installing an appreciation plaque at the Recreation Center honoring Norma Jean, former Recreation Director. We've discussed this at length.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion or comments?
Mr. Mayor, for me, yeah, this, this was brought up to us in our committee a while back, and, and thought it was a good idea. We had a, really a, a good, solid citizen movement here to really bring forward honoring Norma Jean Page for all her years of service and contributions she's made to the island and to the families on the island through the Recreation Center. So certainly am very much in favor of this. And I think we had 260 residents' signatures that were, was submitted as well, if I remember correctly, that were in support of this. Thank you.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item D, consideration of 2023 surfing application from Monica Becerra, Becerra, Chair of the Stoke.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've got the application in your packet. The original application requested the location where we had already approved the other two. Staff went back and had a conversation about asking them to pick another location. You can see what we're approving is somewhere in the 25th to 30th Street location.
Can I ask a question? Where, where have you decided that the other two are going to be located? Are they still at the, at that cluster of?
The two that were approved, one was for Sixth Avenue and another one for Eighth Avenue.
Yeah. Were you going to spread them out over the island or keep them clustered down? You said you were going to look at moving one of them to another part of the island.
No, I, my understanding was any future applications, since those two have already been approved, any future applications would be at, we would ask them to pick another section of the island, which is what we did with, with Ms. Becerra.
That was not my understanding, but, okay, that's where we are.
That's what I recalled.
Me, me too. Yep.
We went back and looked at the minutes.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item E is discussion of having residents speak first during citizens' comments. We had a little bit of conversation around this at our workshop. I know staff looked at other municipalities as well as looked at the Municipal Association of South Carolina for feedback and what they had. I don't know, Desiree, and then Mac, I'd love to hear your comments on what your view of this is. You, you want to start there, or you want?
Sure.
Yeah. Mac would love to just hear your comments.
Yeah. So as I understand it, you have 30 minutes allocated for speakers. And so if you have a really hot-button issue, short-term rentals, whatever, like the last meeting where we had a ton of people show up, if it's residents first, there may be non-residents potentially that can't speak on the issue, which I think gets you in trouble. You know, the way I've seen it done, the way we do it on the school board is first-come, first-served basis. That way, you can't be accused of being unfair or trying to exclude somebody's thoughts or public comments or anything like that. The, the issue is if you open the door and you create the public forum, but then based on your rules, you exclude somebody, that's where you get in trouble. And so, at least from a legal standpoint, it would be concerning to me if there is an issue where a lot of people want to talk, that an issue that affects not only residents but non-residents, and they're not permitted to talk because residents get to speak first.
And then, Desiree, I know you all talked to MASC, and you'd shared the memo, don't you?
Yeah, I, I shared just a memo and some, some case law about this issue. Essentially, you know, they couldn't find any other community that has a policy where residents speak first, not to say that you all couldn't do it. I think that Mac raised some issues that I think you all should consider. You know, I, I, we also checked with neighboring communities, other folks that, that we constantly talked to, to see what, what they do. And I recall there was one community that during COVID, they were doing virtual, virtual meetings, and they were accepted public comment. At that point, they did let residents speak first, but I don't, they're not doing that anymore. So I couldn't find an example of a community that has that as a, as a policy. Usually what we've seen is a first-come, first-served, if they provide public comment. A lot of communities don't even allow any public comment on city council meetings. So that's, just share that with you all to, to hopefully, facilitate the conversation about what you all could do or should do.
I thought the MASC, the Municipal Association came back and said there was some communities that did not allow non-residents to speak at all.
There was one.
Sumner, and she said, has mentioned as specific as example. And so I don't know how that reconciles with Mac's view of, of that, you know, because they're, they're saying they only allow residents to speak.
I would be concerned about that if you're opening this up as a public forum to allow people to express their concerns, and you're, and it's an issue that affects residents and non-residents, whether that's parking or whatever. And there, and some people can speak and others can't. I feel like if you open that door, you got to open it for everybody.
Jan.
Okay. I have two questions. First of all, anyone can always submit a written comment, so everyone has the ability to comment. How does that relate to what we're talking about with speaking?
It makes it less risky that someone would challenge it or make an issue of it, but somebody could still challenge it and say, you know, submitting a written comment isn't as effective as looking at a council member in the eye and addressing them and speaking to them publicly. So.
And the second one is, at the short-term rental, one of the short-term rental meetings, there were so many comments from non-residents that there was a resident who was unable to make a comment because time was up. So you've got the opposite situation there, is are we doing a disservice to our, our residents by letting people who are not community members speak more than, more often and cutting them off?
Yeah, Jan, we've extended the periods, particularly during the short-term rental workshops. I mean, the period was extended past the 30 minutes routinely, and there were a number of times where we opened the podium for anybody that hadn't signed up or hadn't done anything. So I mean, I don't know that we've kept a resident from speaking personally.
I think a lot of this was generated perhaps from the last meeting where we had one specific non-resident come and, and make some comments about the residents that kind of resonated. And there was, I think, some blowback that maybe we should either restrict or, or at least reorder the residents and non-residents. And I don't think anybody wants to either cut anybody's time or not let anybody speak. At least I don't. But I think that was more of a let the, let the residents speak first. And if we ever had a situation where we did have to cut time, that at least the residents would be heard. But I think, Mac, in light of your advice, that probably the best thing to do is to kind of leave things the way they are. I would like to see that maybe we can, you know, make it really crystal clear that when people get up to the podium, whether or not they are a resident or a non-resident, and what their interest is in speaking. I think that would be helpful. And if things get out of hand, like they might have gotten out of hand on the, on the last meeting, that, you know, either one of us or some of us, you know, use the gavel to try to get that, those comments a little bit more under control.
Rusty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's, so, my, my, several years on council here, we've never, in my memory, had any, any time that we've, we've denied anyone, whether they're a resident or a non-resident, a chance to speak. So I think that that's really a point that is moot, as far as I'm concerned, because it just doesn't happen. If someone perceives that that happens and they just don't raise their hand to speak, they haven't really followed us very closely. Because as the mayor had mentioned earlier, there've been numerous times that we've gone over the 30-minute limit. We've allowed over three minutes for residents to speak from time to time, or non-residents for that matter. And we, as a council, have voted to extend the, the public portion of comments so that people could go on because we had more that wanted to weigh in. The fact is, when someone gets to that podium to say their three minutes worth, we don't know what they're going to say until they say it. That's, that's the fact. And sometimes, it's not pretty. Sometimes, you know, sometimes it, it hurts a little bit. And it's very honest, it's very straightforward, I'm sure, from the ones that get up there and speak. And I'm not going to make any excuses for what might have happened in a previous meeting, but I remember these comments that we're kind of touching on here. I could see where someone could be offended. I could see where people could be offended, but I don't think it rose to the occasion where someone would need to be gabbled down. I do think that there are situations that could come up, that obviously if someone's out of control, or, you know, a really heated situation where they would have to be gabbled and, and asked to no, to make no further comments. But I've just, I'm, I'm just of the opinion that people ought to be able to sign up and speak. We allow them to speak their three minutes. We try to keep them within the three minutes. If they're a resident, non-resident, you know, go for it. And we've had, I know, I can think of several times that we've had non-residents come up and plead with us for certain things, like the wheelchairs for the beach, Beach Santa, you know, who is not a resident, come up to talk about litter on the beach and those sort of things. And the presentations that we have, that we allow people to, to do, that has nothing to do with the three-minute citizen limit. So don't confuse that at all. If someone's invited here to do a presentation from an organization or whatever, they are allowed to make that presentation, and we don't typically limit them in any way. Thank you.
Jimmy?
As long as I can remember, the protocol has always been, citizens' comments, state your name, your address, then make your comments. And it's always been that way. I'd like to, to see us go back to that simple protocol. That way, we won't have a problem.
Good idea.
It's always been, until just recently.
All right, Mac, thank you for, next item, consideration of city sponsoring and co-hosting Martin Luther King Reception with YWCA of Greater Charleston, Explore Charleston, and Wild Dunes Resort. We've had the presentation already. Jan, I know you've had a lot of, you've shared and earlier and have a written comment in the packet. If we can have a motion and a second, we'll get to discussion.
So move?
Second.
Jan, anything else you want to add to what's already been said?
I think that the main thing I just want to emphasize is the opportunity for the island to have a, first of all, to get money back from CVB that we could use for this event, that it could also enhance attendance here on the island during the lowest month of the year, put some more heads in beds, and, and certainly raise the community and beyond the community's awareness in a positive way of our community.
How, how much are they going to have out? Like, what exactly are they going to, because I, she was talking about different things in different places, and it sounded like she wants to consolidate. Does that mean that the whole function would be here, or do we not know?
Just the reception.
This is actually a new function for them.
Okay.
Which would be, there's a corporate breakfast on Thursday morning where the politicians and the corporations and the major donors all attend. So this reception would be held the night before, which would hopefully encourage those people going to the corporate reception to stay here, to go to corporate breakfast, to stay here after our reception. So, but that would be the event. And then hopefully in following years, when MLK becomes a week-long event, we would already be in position to, to capture that.
Mr. Mayor, what are we actually voting on? Because we, we don't have any money tied to this. So I don't really know what we're doing.
Just can, there is a lot of work left to be done, obviously, on this. And it's just to decide today that you want to be in a co-hosting role, you're going to, it's not going to be a city expense. I mean, it'll be an ATAX expense. So, say it again.
I'm sorry. It's, it's, I don't know how to vote for it because I don't know how much it's going to cost. And it's sort of, we're going down the slippery slope. That's what, so I just don't know.
At this point, I could, yeah. It could cost us nothing if we want, or it can cost us whatever we choose, because we have got such positive support already between the CVB and, and the resort, that I think our participation is whatever we want it to be.
And will there be another vote for expenditure money?
Yeah. I think at this point, we're just talking about co-hosting. If it, if we're using state ATAX money, it's got to go back to If it, if we're using state ATAX money, it's got to go back through our ATAX advisory committee anyway. So at this point, it's really just a decision to decide to jump in with these other two partners to co-host an event out here.
Correct. And, uh, I apologize for not having more detailed figures, but.
There's still work to be done.
With, um, Terry Hack not here for the, for the month, that until she gets back to town, we're having trouble getting, we just don't have an opportunity to get catering costs.
Right. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Last item, again, we've had a lot of conversation on this one. Consideration of approval of notice of intent to purchase Caterpillar front loader for Public Works in fiscal '24. This has a long lead time, which is the only reason we're getting in front of this.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item seven, boards and commissions report. Board of Zoning Appeals, minutes are attached. Planning Commission, minutes are attached. Accommodations ATAX, Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, minutes are attached. Environmental Advisory Committee, minutes are attached. Ordinances, resolutions, and petitions. We've got second reading for ordinance 2023-01 to provide regulations for dogs biting, chasing, or attacking.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is that motion to approve and waive the reading?
Waive the reading.
Thought I heard.
I think it pretty much explanatory.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Couple items for first reading, which are by title only, which we will vote on tonight and they'll be referred back to committees for further conversations and modifications. Ordinance 2023-03 to require lawn and commercial services to remove yard debris from residential and rental properties.
You need a.
Sorry.
Just need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve. But.
This is title only, right?
Correct. And they're going to be referred back to a committee for further modifications and tweaks.
Can we discuss it now?
With a point of order change.
We need a motion first before we do anything.
Well, somebody needs a second, this, that, first.
Second.
Thank you. Because I just wanted to make a suggested revision.
We want to have a point of order. We need to put out the point of order.
But it'll move back to committee where you can make that. Because it'll come back to public services and facilities. Okay. So aren't you on that committee?
Yeah, this one will.
Yeah. Okay. So it'll come back to you next week. So whatever you want to say. You'll be, you'll be one of the first to say it.
And the committee could also make.
It'll be back with us, Katie.
The committee can also make recommendations for, um, revisions to be presented to council for second reading as well. So you could do it here.
So that would be the time for revisions?
Correct.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Nay.
Ordinance 2023-04 to increase from two to four the number of resident parking decals that may be issued to a non-resident property owner. This one would be referred back to Public Safety Committee.
So move without reading?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item C, resolutions and petitions. Resolution 2023-02 to support adoption of House Bill 3620, Pinkney Hate Crimes Act. We talked about this at our workshop. This has gone through, been passed by the State Senate, currently in the House.
Motion to approve.
Without reading?
Without reading.
Second.
Need further discussion?